Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. Thank you for joining us today. Today is Tuesday, September 26, 2023. We'll go ahead and call our regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Apologies for the late start. It is 5:04 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. As we do at every board meeting, we'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, thank you. Before I continue, we do have language support today, variety of different languages here tonight. If you are in need of language support, please raise your hand if you need a language other than English today. We do have that available. Si usted necesita algún intérprete, tenemos acceso a intérpretes en esta tarde. Si necesita alguien que le intérprete, que sea intérprete para esta reunión, puede levantar la mano. Tenemos personas que le puedan ayudar si alguien necesita intérprete. We also have a few other language resources tonight. If you do have another language that you speak, okay, if you do, we do have that resource tonight. Again, thank you, everybody, for joining me. Board colleagues, Superintendent Stebbelfield, to all of our staff and to all of our guests that are with us this afternoon. Thank you for joining us and glad to have you here today. With that, we will have a roll call. Ms. Smith, if we could do our roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, before we approve the agenda, just one note, and I did email you this afternoon, so hopefully you had a chance to see that, but would ask for a motion to amend today's agenda to add an executive session, which is under item number 13B, to add an executive session regarding personnel with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
I don't have a question about that, but I would like to add, if we could add something in regard to COVID-19, an update to the agenda, please.
Okay. So is there a motion to add an agenda item on COVID-19 update?
I think you've got, it would be an amendment to the current motion because you haven't voted on the first.
Gotcha, okay. So it would be an amendment to the current motion that's in place to amend the agenda for item, to add item 13B, those that made the motion. And the second, if you are in agreement to amend your motion to include this item.
Under board discussion.
Under board discussion. Could that be okay?
Yeah.
So looking at the folks that made the motion, okay. So we have amended the motion to amend the agenda to add a board discussion item on COVID-19 updates under board discussion. And I know, I would just ask if staff are available to give whatever update they can, and then if we have questions that can't be answered, we'll make sure that we get back to everyone. So any other questions or additions? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, and just want to make sure we have the motion to corrected correctly? Okay, thank you.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Okay. Now, I would entertain a motion to approve today's amended agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're going to jump right into our agenda again. Si alguien necesita algún intérprete, por favor levante la mano. Tenemos intérpretes disponibles. And we will jump right into our awards and recognition, a fun time of the year. So I'll ask Ms. Samree Devon to come to the podium.
Good evening. Good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Superintendent Dr. Stebbelfield, the board, and the KCKPS community. So just like Mr. Lopez says, recognizing and celebrating the talent of our staff and our students is always a very joyful event. So before we begin, we just, I need to just share a few directions for our honorees this evening. First of all, when the recognized staff member or student is announced, please join us in the front so our communications team can capture a picture of you for our district's social media. After we finish all recognitions, we will have a very short break where we will capture three additional photos. The first being with the honoree, the superintendent and the board. The second, our nominating staff, and the principal will join. And lastly, we ask for our families that are here to support to please join the group. We will get started now with our Employee of the Month for September, the very first one for the school year. So I would like to have Ms. Lori Walker come up, please. So tonight, we are asking the KCKPS board and community to recognize Ms. Lori Walker. She is the counselor at Rosedale Middle School. She is being nominated by the Carl V. Bruce Administration Team, and that's by Principal Stacy Chapman, Assistant Principal Erin Woolam, and Assistant Principal Steve Evans. You're probably wondering why. Well, before, before school started, Ms. Walker came to Carl V. Bruce to help with, to help us with our difficult schedule and some glitches that we had encountered. She did not hesitate to come help and was willing to work outside, work outside school hours to accommodate our students and make sure all schedules were ready to go for the first day of school. Through the process, she remained positive and found solutions. She also helped with our proximity learning sessions by assigning teachers and getting them set up an infinite campus for our students. We appreciate you very much, Ms. Walker, and all she did to help us at Carl V. Bruce this summer, thank you so very much. And this is a great example of helping others get better every day. So thank you, Mrs. Walker. Did you get your picture? All right.
Good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Drew, and Superintendent Dr. Anna Stebbelfield, and esteemed members of the board and our guests. It's with great pride and enthusiasm that we gather here this evening to recognize and celebrate our Exceptional Students of the Month for September 2023. These outstanding young individuals have consistently demonstrated unwavering commitment to academic excellence, personal growth, and community engagement. Nominations for Student of the Month can be made under the following six pillars: attendance recognition, outstanding academic performance, positive behavior, commitment to service, citizenship, scholarship, and community recognition, and outstanding athletic achievements. These nominations can come from staff, students, and/or community members. Their remarkable achievements that you'll hear tonight serve as a testament to the dedication of our students in USD 500, the tireless efforts of our educators, and the support of our families and communities. As we shine a spotlight on these bright stars, we are reminded of the immense potential that exists within our educational system and the promise of a brighter future for Kansas City, Kansas. I would like to acknowledge that all students who are nominated for Student of the Month will also be recognized at our Fall Semester Excellence in Education Awards Ceremony, which is a joint event between the Division of Student Services and Family Support and the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools Foundation for Excellence. We would like to thank Ms. Crystal Watson and the foundation, as well as our generous sponsor, Capital Federal Bank, for their support that makes these special awards possible. So without further ado, let us begin the ceremony to honor and applaud our Students of the Month. Our first Student of the Month is Kyler Newton, representing Early Childhood Scholars at Silver City Elementary School. And Kyler is just precious, too. When she comes up here, you'll see it. She was nominated by Raylene Laster, a teacher at Silver City, and is being nominated under the pillar of service and citizenship. Ms. Laster notes that this is Kyler's second year in preschool at Silver City. Last year, she was one of the youngest students in the class, and this year, she's one of the oldest. She has embraced this change with open arms, helping other students any way she can. Kyler's activities include opening milk cartons for friends, showing others their seat on the carpet, teaching them expectations, even sleeping near friends who are having trouble during naptime. She is the same with helping the teachers. She's always willing to help clean up, get supplies, or push in chairs. She has shown tremendous leadership skills, and this year is demonstrating them confidently along with her caring ways. Some fun facts about Kyler. I asked her how she felt about being Student of the Month, and she said, "It feels good." She likes to play with toys when she's not at school, but she couldn't decide which one is her favorite. She loves art, and I asked her what she wanted to be when she grows up, and she said she wants to be a loving mother like her mom. I told you she was precious. Next up for Student of the Month is Isabella Brown, representing TA Edison Elementary Isabella has a special nomination because she's been nominated by none other than her principal, Ms. Cindy Cope. She's a third-grade student at TA Edison and is being nominated under the pillar of service and citizenship. Principal Cope states, "She is a quiet, conscientious student who always puts forth her best effort and is a creative thinker." Although Isabella says she likes school, riding horses is her true passion. This passion has led her to volunteer. Bella started riding horses when she was five years old. She competed in horse shows and won over 20 awards. Most of all, Bella has always wanted her own horse, so she started doing chores around the house to earn money to buy the horse. She walked the dogs and did a lot of cleaning to raise the money. Once she had enough money, Bella rode a few horses to decide which one was best for her. She chose a Grulow quarter horse from South Dakota. He's 18 years old. His name used to be Porky, but Bella decided to name him Moka. Moka lives in a stable near Bella, and Bella visits him as often as she can. The staff at the sable saw something very special about Moka. They reached out to Bella to ask if Moka could be used as a therapeutic horseback riding program. This program provides adaptive horseback riding programs to both adults and children with disabilities. At first, Bella was hesitant to loan out her horse. Once she learned more about the program and the people who will be helping, she agreed. Now Bella and Moka are community volunteers that put smiles on people's faces every day. Please help us to recognize Isabella for her outstanding community service. Now, fun fact about Isabella, aside from racing and jumping with horses, she says that she wants to be a third-grade teacher when she grows up. I asked her why third grade. She said it's in the middle, but she wants to be a third-grade teacher because she has an outstanding third-grade teacher that she's waited to have since kindergarten, Ms. Jamison Congratulations, Bella. Her picture, you see, that's her and the horse, too. That's Moka. Representing our middle schools, we have none other than Mia Rodriguez Rico, who is a student at Gloria Willis Middle School. Mia is in the sixth grade and is being nominated by Vanessa Abira and Amy Gow. They have said that Mia has shown excellent behavior in academics this year. She works hard, helps others, and does whatever she can to brighten her teacher's day. She embodies the characteristics that we push for all students: respect, safety, responsibility, and pride, not only in self but also for the school. It has been wonderful to meet her and to get to know such an amazing person this year. She truly shines above others in the classroom. Some fun facts about Mia. I asked her what was her favorite thing about Gloria Willis, and she said all of the nice friends and people that she's met. She likes reading, writing, and math, and she wants to be an engineer when she grows up. I asked her what her path looked like for that, and she said she didn't know for college, but she does know she wants to be a Sumner Sabre. And when Mia's not at school, she has two cats, Caramel and Oreo, which made me very And representing our high schools for Student of the Month, we would like to recognize Dominique Gant, a student at Washington High School. Now, this is definitely a night of switcheroo's because Dominique was nominated by the staff at KCK Early Childhood. His nomination was completed by Dr. Amber Block, the Assistant Principal, and Ms. Heather Turi, Principal at KCK Early Childhood. They wrote, "While our positions as an Assistant Principal and Principal of an early childhood building might make this an unusual nomination..." "...we believe Dominique's actions beyond the walls of Washington High School underscore his deserving nature for this recognition. He is not just any high school student, but he embodies responsibility, compassion, and a strong sense of family commitment. This is evident in the lengths that he takes for his younger brother, Zane, who you've met, a vivacious three-year-old attending KCK ECC. With a maturity beyond his years, Dominique has taken it upon himself to ensure Zane's safe transportation to and from school every day. This may seem like a simple task to some, but the sheer consistency and devotion he shows is commendable. Zane's sheer delight in seeing his older brother at the end of his school day is heartwarming. The joy as reflected in Zane's shouts and ensuing embrace speaks volumes about the bond they share. 'Dom,' Zane would exclaim with his entire demeanor lighting up. Notably, when faced with a slight hiccup in the routine due to Dominique's tardiness, Dominique responded with understanding and adaptability and made the changes so that both would be successful. In their daily interactions at KCK ECC, Dominique's presence stands out. Not only does he resonate positivity, but he also serves as a testament to the kind of values we aim to instill in our students. It is not just about academic achievements. It's about building character, forging strong relationships, and understanding responsibilities, all of which Dominique exemplifies. Washington High School is indeed fortunate to have a student like Dominique Gant." Dominique is a senior. He said he wants to go on when he graduates and study computer engineering. When he's not at school, he likes to make beats and rap, so I told him he's probably going to be a music engineer. And then he said the best thing about high school has been meeting the outstanding friends that stand up for the right thing at Washington High School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wilson and Samree, and we'll get those pictures here with everyone in a moment. We'll continue with our agenda. Next up, I'd invite Dom DeRosa, President of our local KNEA, for a special presentation today.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to take just a moment of my time to introduce KNEA, Kansas NEA President Sherri Swans, a vocal choir teacher from Lansing, Kansas.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to every one of you. Thank you, Board, for the commitment to the students and the educators. There's nothing that touches a student's life more than the educators that are before them. And I have the honor of... And I have the honor of recognizing two of your outstanding educators. They took it upon themselves to write a national grant to the NEA Foundation, and they received the Envision Equity Grant. Liz Midle and Carolyn Hummel from Wyandotte High School wrote a grant and received $5,000 to seek, yes, to seek to cultivate a cohort of student-community leaders. Take that in. They want to create student-community leaders who are committed to the principles of democracy and who can play an instrumental role in strengthening it. The grant would support students with having participatory experiences in their local community, communicating with local and state-elected officials, observing in person, and visiting other centers of democracy. What a great example of our educators doing more for their students, going above and beyond. So please accept this $5,000 grant to Wyandotte High School, Liz Midle, and Carolyn Hummel to support their students.
And finally, I'd like to invite Mr. Sam Simmons, our Athletic Director, District Athletic Director, to come to the podium and for another special presentation.
Good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, Board members and community members. I have the esteemed pleasure of finally recognizing our 2023 Speech and Debate State Champions from Sumner Academy. It took us some time to get this organized, and I am sorry for that. Back in May, they did compete for and win that state title. With me today, I do have their Assistant Principal and Athletic Director, Mrs. Rebecca Skinner, who is going to acknowledge to the Board those scholars.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Once again, my name is Rebecca Skinner, the proud Assistant Principal and Athletic and Activities Director at the Sumner Academy of Arts and Science. And so today, Mr. Simmons didn't share it, but this is the twelfth state title consecutive for our Speech and Debate team. So with us tonight, we have six of the thirteen scholars that competed in May. We have Mr. Bennett Otting, Gabriel Andrade, Brielle Jefferson, Isaac Lainez, Alexandria Radford, London Monroe. And we'll share more about their illustrious leader in just a moment. We'll share more about her in just a moment. I also want to highlight the rest of the folks who aren't here tonight: Janaya Benton, the Assistant Coach, Mr. Royal Sullivan, Kellyanne Milborn, Princess Dixon, Kirsten Leach, Edwin Duran, Carolina Perez Lozano, and Andrew Serrano. For our individual event state champions, we do have Ms. London Monroe and Alexandria Radford. And then also, we have individual event state medalists: Ms. Janaya Benton, Brielle Jefferson, London Monroe, Isaac Lainez, Kellyanne Milborn, Bennett Otting. And so we are so glad and so proud. So let's give it up for our Sumner Academy Sabers!
The accomplishments did not stop there, as I have another esteemed pleasure to not only share some of the individual recognition from Mrs. Brown, I just want to throw out there that she was my student-teacher back in the day. So thank you so much, man. I wouldn't be here today without Mrs. Brown. But last school year, for the 2022-23 school year, Mrs. Brown received two very prestigious awards that we want to recognize and acknowledge. The first being an award from the National Federation of State High School Associations, the NFHS. That's our governing body that covers all of high school interscholastic athletics. She received the Speech Debate Theater Academics Association Citation. Now, that is a very distinguished award, only given to thirteen individuals throughout the entire country. This award is designed to honor individuals who have made significant contributions to the NFHS for their respective fields. This is one of the most highly-regarded achievements in high school athletics and performing arts. Congratulations, Mrs. Brown. It did not stop there. It did not stop there. Not only did she receive this distinguished award by our governing association, she was also voted into the Kansas Speech Communication Association Secondary Level Hall of Fame by the Kansas Speech Communication Association. She was voted in for her amazing work in service in the speech communication field, being an expert in her craft, and being recognized by her peers and scholars, and just for being a pioneer in the fields of speech, communication, and drama. Congratulations, Mrs. Brown, and congratulations, scholars, on your amazing accomplishments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Simmons, and congratulations to everyone who's been recognized today, to our students, to their families, and to all the staff who have poured in and invested their time to make sure that our students are prepared and have what they need. So at this time, we're gonna take a brief recess so that the full Board may take pictures with our Students of the Month and all of those being recognized today. So we'll take a brief recess.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for giving us a moment so that we could celebrate with all of our students, employees, and everyone being recognized today. Again, congratulations to all of you, to your families, and to all staff who were a part of that. And thank you again to the team, the committee that puts this together to make sure that we celebrate our students. And as a reminder, as Dr. Wilson mentioned, we will have a celebration at the end of the semester for all of those that were nominated and received recognition. So we'll continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda, item number three is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Mr. Lopez, before we approve, I'd like to ask, we remove J. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, so we will remove item J?
And, Mr. Lopez, I'd like to remove item C. I have a question about one thing on the payment bill.
Item C, okay. Any other items? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items C and J?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further questions, discussion? None. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. So we'll start with item C, Ms. Page.
I had asked, because we've been talking, and when I say "we," myself, you, and Ms. Smith, to Iron Mountain, because we haven't received data from them, but yet they can send a payment for a bill, and they really haven't delivered the goods that they should have. So can we check into that?
Yes, we will. And I had sent an email to the folks over at Iron Mountain, and he responded recently. I'm trying to, which I believe. Yes, he had sent an email, and I will forward that to the board with an update on some of the items that they have in terms of the scanning. And for those that aren't familiar with this, this is regarding the scanning and storage of the board library documents that the board had moved to safeguard and to store off-site that were being held in North Central Office. So they were being scanned into a software so that it could be searchable by staff or by those administrators who were given access to that. So there is a quick update that they have given, and I will make sure to send that to the full board, including those who are administrators or set up to access Insight as the platform. And they are working with them to make sure that everyone has the correct access. I will forward that to the board now. And I know it has been a process, Ms. Page, thank you for bringing that up. It has been a bit of a process to get all the items scanned and making sure that the correct items are scanned properly and stored properly. And thank you, Ms. Smith, for working with them diligently to make sure that all the items are taken care of in a proper way, but we'll make sure that we send that to the full board. Thank you. Are there additional questions on that item, Ms. Page?
No.
Thank you. And then we will go to item J.
Okay, I have two questions. First one is, what are the long-term sustainable goals of TPT collaborating with KCKPS? And what are the thoughts as far as how we're going to move forward?
Dr. Campbell will come forward.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Stubblefield. Ms. Drew, to answer your question, part of TPT support is what we look at to assist with tier-two and tier-level areas when it relates to skills and strategies that need to be captured or to be supported for students. So it's a tier-two and tier-three strategy that is utilized around tutoring. So that's called like double dipping. And so what we look at is looking at those students that their specific skills and right against what we call like our bubble students against that line, that they need just a little bit more support and assistance to get them across that line. So when we talk about what does that look like, tier-two and tier-three support is part of the instructional model that takes place. What we look to do is decrease the number of students that fall into those areas as we increase Level 1, which is that core content, that we look to ensure that more of our students are able to sustain and also that they are equipped and understand the knowledge around.
Thank you. My second question. This is our third year with TPT collaborating with KCKPS as an academic partner. Are there any takeaways that stand out for us to be aware as far as how it is progressing?
Yep. So what I can say is that last year, TPT supported 12 of our schools, and those were our middle schools and high schools. They also supported our students with edgenuity. And out of those 12 schools, there were 58 classes in which they supported. Eight of the 58 made progress.
Eight of the 58 classes?
Classes, yes.
And when we say progress, what does progress mean?
So looking at the baseline data in that course that they were enrolled in, the data shifted and moved, meaning they made at least, and if I go back and look at, there are several data points, but at least a 1% change in their grade for those classes.
And is that data point, and I'm sorry, Ms. Drew, just to follow up to your questions, is that data point similar to the data point that we also saw in summer school, where they kept the knowledge for the four weeks, but do they still have the progress in the data thereafter, after they've left the class?
So part of the summer school is to sustain the information that they capture. And I'm trying to make sure that I understand your question.
So I guess what we saw in summer school, that data said, okay, at the beginning to the end, we saw a change. However, when they came back and took the fall tests, they didn't maintain the information or the knowledge. So what I heard you just say is, in that class, they were able to, eight of those classes changed by 1%.
Or more.
Or more. Okay, gotcha.
No, so it was eight, 50, out of 58 of those classes, eight did not. So 50 classes made progress.
Okay. Thank you. I misheard that.
Yes, 50 classes made progress out of the 58.
And I just want to clarify, you did inverse it, so that's why they were asking the question.
Okay.
She said eight made progress of the 58, so I think that's why.
My apologies.
Fifty, fifty-eight made progress, yeah.
Okay.
I see Mr. Graham is back there. Is there anything you wanted to add? I hope I'm following protocol.
Oh, that's fine. He is here to provide additional insight and support also.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President, Board, and Dr. Stubblefield. I'll jump in with the second question, as far as what are we seeing? I'll kind of share with you something that we're learning from year to year. Year one, which was a half-year with KCPS, everybody was in the struggle with COVID. And what we saw was pulling kids out of the classroom was a struggle. Year two, we came back and made some changes where our teachers were pushing into the classroom. And that's where you saw the 50 out of 58 classrooms that were impacted with almost a grade level increase in each class. Going into year three this year, going into year two and a half this year, we've learned from year to year, how can we get better? How can we better serve the Kansas City-Kansas School District kids? And that is, we've made the commitment, Avid is huge. We sent a boatload of our teachers, of our educators, to Denver to sit in the same training beside the Kansas City-Kansas School District teachers that they are collaborating with on a day-to-day basis. We were in that same training. Our academic and instruction person is here that what I've taxed her and her team with is, hey, you make sure each one of our teachers are solid with MTSS, multi-tier support systems, where when that kid is identified as this tiered learner, then there are certain interventions that are most effective with that type of learner. You make sure our teachers are rock-solid on that so that we're being strategic in putting that kid in a winnable situation. RTI, Avid. So we've made the commitment, year to year, to constantly get better. And I'll close with this. Why do we do this? We don't do this for revenue. We don't do this for financial gain. We do this because we're passionate. Because I was an elementary kid at Bryan Elementary School that they, in the middle of the school year, bused to Bethel Elementary School. And I was called the N-word every single day, and I had strong parents. They said, no, 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 no. You correct them every single time you hear that. And you are an equal learner than the kids that don't look like you from Bryan Elementary School. I went on to West Middle School. I had some very stringent teachers that demanded that I make the dedication in academics, just like I did in sports. I went on to Schlegel High School. Luckily, God showed favor on me that I was able to use baseball to land me on the campus at Kansas State University. Came back, did my student teaching at Wyandotte High School, and I saw the impact, was able to be a vice principal and principal for 10 years. What stood out to me is that my first semester at K-State, my GPA was an 0.9 GPA. My coach said, you get it together or you're going home. And I graduated with a 3.2 GPA. There's a young man sitting over at Grand Elementary School. There's a young man that I had a conversation with sitting over at Harmon High School that needed to hear that story. So the unmeasurables, that's what we're learning as well. She can talk data all day. Our teachers, we've made the commitment with our teachers that they will give you the academic gains. But the unmeasurables, Hispanic kids, Black kids that hit the campus at KU, where KU came out a year ago and said, we no longer will use the ACT to get kids on campus, you're right. But I called KU enrollment and said, you need to tell the other half. You need to tell these kids that we won't use it to get you on campus, but we will use it for scholarship reasons. And our kids need that scholarship money. So that's why we stand in the gap. Anything else I can answer? I'm sorry, Dr. Campbell, I just took over.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I went to a workshop at the KU convention, and they use outcome-based contracting. Do you offer that, to say that we're going to provide you with X amount of students, a success rate in setting up the contract? I'm just asking. I didn't know. That was something new to me.
The language in our proposal is that we will move students from below or approaching to proficiency on your cap testing, and then we also will show gains on your, you guys use FastBridge. So that's our, and in Casey K's case, we showed the academic gains with the letter grades in the classroom. So in our proposal lingo, we do promise what we can deliver. And as I said, we learn from year to year. COVID was very brutal for a district that I grew up in that was already two grades below before COVID. So, you know, are we making an immediate transition? No, we're not. Are we making progress? Yes, we are. We're making academic progress, but more importantly, we're making progress with kids that struggle with test anxiety. Test anxiety and learning anxiety, that put them in bad situations in life. That leads to life anxiety. And that's something, that's an unmeasurable, that your kids, our kids with KCK, that can't be measured on paper.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So I guess just a couple more follow-up questions for me would be, when I look at who is currently getting these supports and how do we plan to sustain these supports as well as in addition to? And I think we all can acknowledge that grades are also...
Subjective.
Yes. And so while I recognize that we've decided to use grades as the point here, is what is in the contract, the long-term solution, so tracking the cap score data for the students in these classes, to know, are we already connecting those dots? Subjectivity, and also, I will say again, I'm always bothered when Sumner is not on this list because I think we're creating a narrative that is false, that they don't need supports. But as a parent of a child at Sumner, I think we need to make sure it's equitable across all the places. But I think those would probably be my final questions with regard to this.
So a couple of things. Some of those, like in the contract, the outcome-based contract, Ms. Page did talk to me about that after the session, and I said, that's something like moving forward that we can definitely look at when it's tied to academics.
The contract currently says, I'm moving your students from this to this.
Right. But I think we can be more specific around percentages or that component of it, and be more clear in equitable and fair around that. As far as the sustainability, everything that's paid for out of S or dollars, we're currently evaluating and will prioritize. And we know that there are some things we will not be able to sustain at this level. And then there are also other funding sources if we have the data to support it, that may mean that we'll stop doing something else. That may mean that we'll stop doing something else where monies are being allocated to do those things that we see the change. But right now, we're evaluating all of those things, looking at the data so that we can balance it out moving forward. And as far as Sumner not being on the list, when we are prioritizing like the kids who need it the most, unfortunately or fortunately, the Sumner students don't rise when we're divvying up the money. But within Sumner, they do have supports. We are going to add Sumner to Avid. And as we look at more targeted tutoring, we can look at what that looks like in an equitable manner across all of our high schools and elementary.
Because I think we tell the narrative that all of our kids are offered tutoring, but not all of them are.
So if I can just interject.
For Harmon, it's only in edgenuity. It's not even, if I'm understanding what this says.
So for the upcoming school year, the, the schools that are going to be supported will be all of our seven middle schools. And we will support all of our high schools, but the support for Sumner will be around ACT. And perhaps just for clarity, there is going to be support provided to Sumner High School.
And do you have any inkling why some of these have negatives or like what the reasoning behind? You have this additional tutor support. I think ones I saw were like negative 2%, where the other folks had all of the growth. Do we understand or have any information around that? Sorry.
So part, the teams are working together. I heard you ask the question, how do we move from the grades to determine? So TPT will be partnering with our DARA team and has partnered with our team to make sure that we are aligned to looking at the same data outcomes, then looking at two different buckets. And so that's something we're being very intentional around this year. Because again, like you said, it's telling, it's like apples to oranges as opposed to making sure that we are all aligned with the data that we're looking at. It's going to go beyond cap assessment data.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say thank you because based upon the information that you presented to us through academic, we're seeing a change. And we have, as Mr. Graham said, we did fall by the wayside with COVID, but now we're beginning to see the change. And so as we continue to move forward, there will be a greater growth and understanding for the students to, to be able to grow and learn within the school district. So I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there additional questions? Thank you. Thank you for the update. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve items C and J from the consent item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you, everyone, for the questions and discussion on that for clarity. If not, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Carries. Thank you. Next up, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Okay, good evening, and I will be fast. Just a few announcements and recognition. Today is Human Resource Professional Day. I, I asked that you join me in giving a big KCKPS shout-out to our HR team for all they do on this day. Thank you for supporting our district. This is a message to each of you who may know, community members and all of those who are watching. The district is looking for individuals to join our Community Vision Team. We have had several individuals to submit the application, and someone will be contacting you about the first meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, October 3rd at 5:30 PM. The application is open through September 28th. However, if we have room, we will continue to take community members as we are looking for residents who would like to help the district create a master planning process to ensure facilities across the district are high-quality environments for students, staff, and community members. There's information on our website about this Community Visions Team and our facilities master planning. I want to say thanks to BRR Architecture Incorporated of Oveland Park. Students at Wyandotte High School and the Architectural Career Pathway will now have access to supplies that will be beneficial in their learning process. Some of the items include an automatic leveller, a new XEM printer, chip boards for modeling, and schematic design posters. All the new equipment will be used to enhance the student learning. This is just one way of many, of many examples where the district collaboration with community partners helps support our diploma plus pathways and provide real-world opportunities and experiences for our students. September is National Suicidal Prevention Month. The KCKPS Behavior Health Team has been collaborating with students and staff all month long to bring awareness to the issue. For more information on how you can support this initiative or for resources, please visit our website. And I want, I have a few shout-outs. I want to shout out some of our staff. Megan Schmidt from Sumner Academy got an opportunity to throw out the first pitch at the Royals game last week. The honor was bestowed on her for being the recipient of the Blue Cross, Blue KC Coaches with Character Award. Also, congratulations are in order for Washington High School football coach Cameron Smith for being named the Coach of the Week by the Kansas City Chiefs. Smith received this honor this past Tuesday, last week, a week ago today, thanks in part to his team starting off 3-0 on the season. Coach Smith was presented with the plaque from former Chiefs great Gary Spinney. He also received a pair of Patrick Mahomes Signature Series sunglasses. Quindale Elementary School Behavior Health Social Worker Abby Cole will be headed to Iowa next week to be honored for being named the 2023 Kansas School Social Worker of the Year. We honored her and recognized her earlier this year. She will be honored at the Annual Midwest School Social Worker Council's Recognition Ceremony. This award is presented to one school social worker from each state who work to exemplifies the highest quality of social work services. So congratulations to Ms. Cole. And finally, this is Attendance Awareness Month. I want to remind everyone that this month is Attendance Awareness Month. It is a good time to remind all students and families about the importance of being present at school each day. Remember, absences add up, so let's show up together. We're holding a District-wide Spirit Day tomorrow, Wednesday, September 27th. Wear your neon because good attendance leads to bright futures. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a couple of quick items. Board, a couple of reminders. Hopefully, you have on your calendar, October 2nd, we have a special meeting at 4:00 PM. And so hopefully, you have that on your calendar. That is next Monday, 4:00 PM, October 2nd. Additionally, October 19th is, also should be on your calendar for our board retreat. And Ms. Smith has sent out that information. I don't have that time in front of me. I believe it's 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM. Both of those will be in-person meetings. Is that right?
Yes, and October 19th is a junior, the junior achievement.
Junior achievement, yes. Thank you. So October 19th will be at Junior Achievement. October 2nd will be here in person. Hopefully, you have those on your calendar. If you need more, more information, or if you don't have that, Ms. Smith can get you the information for that as well. Just want to say thank you to Wyandotte High School. I was able to attend their football game and homecoming last week, as were several of my board colleagues and staff that were there. A great, great turnout, great fun. And congratulations on, on Wyandotte for having a great time and turnout for your fans and family. So thanks for, for hosting and for the fun time. And also just want to share, Board, at the next board meeting, next regularly scheduled board meeting, we will hear from Ms. Crystal Watson with Kansas City, Kansas School Foundation for Excellence with some announcements. But just to tee that up, I do want to just show, or in front of you, you have some cards, foundation cards with information about the foundation and their I Believe campaign, which we, we will learn and hear more about on October 10th from Crystal Watson. And it's an excellent opportunity for us as a board to get behind and as a district to get behind and support the foundation so that we can continue to support our students, our families, and our staff who benefit from those proceeds from the I Believe campaign. So in October, they will be launching the I Believe campaign throughout the district. There's a QR code for you to donate directly and support the foundation as, as is listed on the cards. You can learn more information again on October 10th. There will be several events that they will be holding upcoming, and I just want to make sure you have those on your calendar. You'll get more information and calendar invites for that as well. But just so that you can hear them and have them, Friday, October 27th, there is the Partners for Excellence Annual Breakfast, which will be in the morning at Kansas City, Kansas Community College Tech Center. So hopefully, you have that on your calendar. And then the Reasons to Believe Awards Celebration will be Thursday, November 2nd in the evening. And so hopefully, you have that on your calendar as well. That will also be at the KCK Community College Tech Center. And then finally, their Excellence in Education program will be tentatively on December 13th. Location to be determined. So just want to make sure we share those, so you have them on your calendars. I'll make sure Ms. Smith has that information, and Ms. Watson will definitely make sure all the board members are invited to that. But definitely excited to hear more from Ms. Watson and to answer any questions you have at the next board meeting. And with that, I would open up, or for any other board members to share.
From the 13th to the 16th of September, had an opportunity to attend the CUE conference and really learned a lot, had a lot of good information, especially for urban schools. I think we definitely need to be there. And I had a chance to sit on, sit in on the outcomes-based contracting, and I liked what they said. We don't buy services. We buy outcomes. And that's important because we spend so much money on different programs. And we need to make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we're looking for. And we should be held accountable just as well as the companies that we contract with because we're buying, but what are we, are we really getting our bang for our buck? So I, I, I'm trying to get some more information to pass on. I thought they did an excellent job. I also went to a workshop entitled, "Post-Pandemic Wisdom, Trauma, Triggers, and Healing." And it talked about having healthy adults as well as healthy children. And he asked us the question, can our best work be done if we're in crisis? And we are in crisis. Our kids are hurting, the adults are hurting. So we got to figure out a way, how do we help each other? And this one principal offered yoga classes for the students and the staff. They had therapeutic spaces for the students and the staff that you can go and meditate, relax, because we need that, because we're all coming to the table with a lot of baggage. But we can't help anybody if we can't help ourselves. They also had animals that you could bring in that also help with stress. And he just had a litany of things that they were doing at their schools that I thought was awesome and maybe some things that we need to try. Because the theme throughout the conference is, we can't keep operating the way that we've been doing. It's not working. And we have to be realistic that it's not working. It's working for some, but not all. And then the, one of the keynote speakers was Dr. Rosa Rivera McCurren and who works at Hunter College. She wrote a book called Radical Care. And I would urge anyone who enjoys reading that you buy the book because she talked about dealing with racism in America, cultivating authentic relationships, and how we need to make our students and our staff believe that they can do anything and that we have to push that rigor with sometimes our expectations are low. We may not want to admit that they're low, but they are. And that we need that rigor so that we can push our kids to go on and do and be the best that they can. And then she dealt with leveraging power strategically, that sometimes maybe some of our policies don't really help our kids. They hurt them. And that we need to work on our schedules. We're still operating like we were farmers. Historically, our school system is set up like everybody's still involved in agriculture, but we're not. So that might mean that we have to change. Change is a big word. I struggled with it myself. So we all do, but we got to do is it good for the kids. And then they said, we need to have a vision, and our kids need to see some hope. We got to come in. If I'm not happy, then they're not going to be too happy. You know, we got to come in with some enthusiasm and be excited about what we teach so we can pass that on to the kids. Then when they walk in the room, it may not seem like much, but I'm in a math room and I don't really like this. But somehow, you got to get them to buy into it. And if I'm not excited, then they're not going to be excited. So the whole thing is just, we got to build each other up, build these kids up, build their parents up too as well, to make them believe, your baby can do it. We're going to work together and we're going to help him or her achieve this. This is not to say we're not doing it, but we need to do more. And if we're going to really help the kids. And then we went to another workshop entitled, "Not Another Town Hall Meeting." And they use, they try a World Cafe in which they come together and set the whole room up, like parents are going to a cafe. They said they provide food, they feed them well. From 5:00 to 5:30 is the meal. 5:30 to 6:00, they break into groups. And as they come in into their groups, each parent is given a card. It deals with accountability, assessment, achievement. And they bring in their parents, their student, community leaders, and they meet once a month. And they work on, it's not a gripe session. What's your issue? What's your concern? How do we make it better? And then we move within three groups to deal with the issues. And you have to give suggestions. We're trying to make it work. We know we got problems. You brought it up, so how do we resolve it? And then make them a part of that process. And then they turn these in, and they report back based on the data that they've collected using our media centers to let the parents know that this information is going to the necessary committee. So I will pass this out to who needs it. And then our final speaker was Ice T., who's on Law and Order Victims Unit. Now, some people were kind of shocked that he was the speaker, but he made a lot of sense. And, and it was fun to see that whole process because he just kept it 100, that, hey, we got to change what we do. People believed in me, I believed in myself. And that's what it's going to take in order for it to work. And you may have, the whole key thing is, this is the system we have. Is it really working for the kids? What adjustments do we need to make and make those to make it better for the children? So again, I, I, I had a lot of fun, learned a lot, and it was just nice to meet other people. And that's what we all talked about, no matter where we sat and met. Well, what are you doing? Ferguson, you'd be amazed at the things that they've accomplished considering all the drama that came about after this situation with Michael Brown. And they've turned, turned that whole district around. If they can do it, I think we can do it. And we just have to put forth that effort and that energy and the time. I also attended the Elected Women in Politics meeting on the 19th. Got a chance to meet, and it's important that our girls need to see that they too can be a judge, a lawyer, a doctor, what have you, and, and you're a state representative. That, that was a good thing. I also went to an election forum to see who the candidates were and urge everyone, please vote in November. I'm not telling you who to vote for, but we got to put in people who are going to make a difference. And just quit allowing people to come in and keep doing the same thing, make the same promises, and move on. That's not good for our community. So we need to all be involved in our voting process. Attended the special board meeting on the 22nd. We had our academic meeting. Kudos to Mr. Harris and Ms. Howe for coming to attend. And I don't think Ms. Drew would mind, but we need more parents involved. And they have good suggestions, good ideas. We just need to get people involved and excited about our kids. Even if you don't have any kids, if you had some, you interact with young people, we need to be involved with it. So it was a good month. Enjoyed it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Page, for sharing. It's true.
This is going to be very short. I, I attended the SPED team meeting on September 21st. I am greatly impressed in seeing how they are moving in a very positive direction, including with, meeting with parents, continually talking to them and helping them, and also trying, doing home visits, dealing with internal structures from within, and constantly meeting throughout the year where they are beginning to see some progress. So to Dr. Laurie and her committee, thank you very much. And I'm sure that when the time comes, you will be presenting to the board so they can see everything. There is growth, growing in the SPED department. And I was looking at information, and I don't know too much, but I ran across some information. Wanted to say thank you to the Audio Enhancement School Safety Systems. When I looked at the schedule, they have really been working. When I looked at the schedule, they have really been working extremely and it's been very time-consuming. So again, I just want to say thank you to the workers. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. True. Ms. Russell.
Yeah, I will also keep it brief. Ms. Page did a really great job of talking about the CUBE conference. And so I also had the privilege to attend. And it is by far my favorite conference that I've had to be able, had the privilege of attending while on this board. As she mentioned, I think my biggest takeaway, and one of the keynotes had us all reflect on that one person in your school experience, how they made you feel and what that felt like. And that for many of our students, they walk in the hallways and no one ever notices them. No one says hello, no one greets them. And so just really challenging the group to remember that even though that really great grade A student is doing well, doesn't get in trouble, that they still need someone to say, hey, how are you doing? Hey, how was your day? Or just saying hello. Because oftentimes, we spend a lot of time connecting with those who are outspoken or those who are in troubling situations. And so I look forward to us all amplifying the message of Radical Care and what that looks like and reading that book and circling back together. I also attended the World Cafe, which I look forward to at our board retreat or another function, discussing what that looks like for us to truly engage and find a welcoming environment where people can share, but we can also create solutions together. Lastly, I will say, my plus one and I also had the privilege last week, my plus one, and I'm talking about Mr. Steve Lilly. Oh, and Dr. Stubblefield joined us too at some point. Had the privilege of going with Newkirk Novak. On top of us, amplifying quality instruction and making sure that students, student achievement is at the forefront. Another component of that is our facilities. And so we had the privilege to tour one of three of our stops along this facility bus tour to see what other districts in our community are doing, how they are addressing athletics, how they're addressing fine arts, and all of those things in between. And I have some items for the board that weren't able to attend to look at them. And there's a crossword on the back, so be really excited about that. I am. Tomorrow, I might wear my bright orange Newkirk Novak shirt. But, sorry. But I'm excited to go on this journey with our Community Vision Team as well as District Leadership and those that may be at the table to explore what that continued investment and what that means for our students to make sure not only do they have the best education, but they also have the buildings and the spaces and the, as Ms. Page talked about, the mental supports in those rooms and the things pools. I'm just saying that. To be able to truly succeed in our district thereafter. So I'm excited for what's to come and all the work we have in front of us. But yeah, great things are happening at KCKPS.
So much, Ms. Russell.
You're welcome.
Dr. Wen.
Glad that Ms. Page mentioned Ferguson, because that's a Zoom call. When they announced their success, I can't remember the timeframe, but coming out as like second highest scores in the state of Missouri. It's kind of like, if they can do it, I can't, we do improvement. Among, likewise, attended the CUBE conference. One session, both Dr. Stubblefield and I attended dealt with student achievement data. And so looking forward to having that retreat so we can bring all of this up and figure out how we can. And we're not experimenting, because these are solutions with data, with urban school districts that probably have more challenges than we do, but success is possible. And then on a different note, first two Mondays and Tuesdays in October, I will attend a Special Committee on Education that the legislature is convening. And while there was, this for you, Dr. Laurie, while there was supposed to be a special task force on special ed, probably will not happen so that I will, I can give the agenda to Ms. Smith and then you can always clue in, see what kind of conversation. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. Additional members? Thank you. We'll continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda is item number five, our Community Comment section. As a reminder, everyone is welcome to give comment. Please sign up with Ms. Smith no later than the Monday at noon before the board meeting. Tonight, we do have Ms. Cece Mank, and I apologize if I mispronounce her name. Are you with us tonight? I don't see Ms. Cece. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lopez, now, was this the time we can ask the question? Or when we were doing communication? I just wanted clarity on that.
Ask the question on?
Well, I had asked that we add to the agenda.
Yes.
I wanted an update, so I didn't know if that comes here or where.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We placed that under Board Discussion, item number 12, so it'll be later on in the agenda.
Oh, okay, got you.
So that way, we give our staff time to come up and be able to present any information and answer questions. Thank you. Okay, so we'll continue with our agenda. Item number six, we will hear from our Director of our Libraries, Ms. Carol Lebers. Good afternoon, Ms. Carol.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield. We have kind of a lengthy one, but I'll be short and I know our time is kind of... I don't see my thing. Nope, that's not it. Sorry. Bear with me.
Anyone that can help Ms. Lebers with the?
There it is.
Thank you.
It wasn't on the screen. Thank you. I'm going to try and just kind of update you. And I also want to bring Laura Lovelace, who's the Branch Manager for the main library, up because I want her to explain some of the items that I'm going to present to you. We're just going to go through this fast because it is a little bit lengthy, but please bear with us. So now, summer reading kickoff, because we didn't have time, so I'm going to kind of condense most of the information. The summer reading program kicked off. We at the Boulevard Drive in, and thank you, Ms. Drew and Ms. Humphrey, for always being there to support us. We appreciate it. We had about 1,008 people that attended. And we had the author, Chris Meggs, who gave out a free, not free, we paid for it, but he brought his book called Go Chiefs Go. And each kid got a free book. And I'm just going to go through most of the pictures. There he is. We have Ariu there. We had our staff there with all our items on display. These are just pictures of Ariu and some of the kiddos. As you can see, a little kid from, what was that school? I can't remember. Emerson. And we had face painting. We had free books to give out. We had games. This was early in the evening, but later some more cars came because they waited for the movie to start when it was a little bit darker. And people were lining up for face painting. We had pride story time at West. I'm just going to give you each library. We had 58 people. We had people from the Burmese families that came there and they were very excited. And everybody kind of enjoyed that program. We had a lot of crafts during that program as well. South, I had the Kansas City Symphony mobile music box at South for their opening. We had some summer camp at Schlegel. We had nine summer camp sessions from June 4th to August 10th. And each session had 25 students in, we had 35 volunteers helping run the camps. And it was really successful. Everybody enjoyed it. And these are just pictures of our camps, so I'll go through them quickly. We had fishing. We had, we had our style lab open as well for the kids. Quite a few things. This month, actually from September 1st to October 20th, at West Wyandotte Library, we had, we have on display imprinting the West. And it's the Westwood Expansion through most transformational elements in America life, American life throughout the 19th century. So if you're interested to see that, it is at the West Library. And then I'm going to have Laura kind of explain our summer programs at Maine, because the kids were just fantastic and excited to do that.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Dr. Stubblefield. I'm happy to share with you that this summer, we tried something for the first time ever. We've never done it before. And we created a nine-hole mini golf course. All of the holes were designed by staff. And so we had dinosaurs, sharks, a volcano. We had a prize hole. We had elephant and piggy. All of you teachers will know elephant and piggy. We had a Just Read hole. We had a luau. Our computer IT group built a motherboard with an info panel on what computer problems can happen. And then we had the good, the favorite of all the adults was Caddyshack. Most of the kids did not even know what Caddyshack was. But we had over 300 kids play. And we tried something different this summer. And normally, a library program would be a one-time event at a set time. And so part of our last staff survey and public survey, some of the feedback we got that it's very hard for people to attend a program at 2:00 on a certain day and so forth. So we set this nine-hole golf course up every single Friday, a couple of nights and a couple of Saturdays. And so it was the most popular thing we've probably ever done, except Ms. Russell, last year trunk retreat. We had 700 people.
I'll be back. I'll be back. I'm already planting my trunk.
But we were, we had a lot of, this was a kid-centered event. If an adult was attended by a child, they could play. So we had many families play. But we had a lot of requests for adults to offer an adult version. So I think maybe we're going to run a little craft, but something this fall that we could try. And then I have the great honor to tell you about Carol Lebers and I, our trip to Croatia. We did a sister city exchange. And this time last year, two of our librarian friends from Karlovac, Croatia were here. They spent a week with us, learning about KCKPL, our city, and how libraries run in this country. And in June, it was Carol and our turn to return the favor. And our sister city library, they got a grant to make this project happen. And then with their help, Carol and I got to go to Croatia. And these are some of our librarian friends from the Karlovac City Library. And Carol was able to talk to school groups. We toured some seven libraries in Croatia. And Carol was able to talk to school groups, and many of them wanted to know what American kids were like and what do they read and what do they eat? And did we bring Cheetos with us? And so I had a request from one of our Karlovac friends, if I could, if there was any way at the airport that I could get some Cheetos and Takis, could I please bring it with them? And you know, at the airport, they don't have large bags. So I had a carry-on full of potato chips that I brought with me.
Cheetos and Takis. Potato chips is a different thing.
Yes. And so this is Carol meeting with the staff of the Karlovac City Library to talk about common issues and how we handle things. And some of the most interesting stuff in Karlovac are sister city. Karlovac County is about 141,000 people. It's very similar to Wyandotte County. And since 1779, they have had the Midsummer Bonfire. And Carol was lucky enough to be there. That's the Cooper River in the middle. And June 23rd is the start of the summer celebration. And the Midsummer Bonfire ushers in summer. And they have competing bonfires in a very controlled setting, but they do light the bonfire with arrow. And it's a magnificent event. But after we visited Karlovac, this is perhaps one of the greatest things I've ever done in my life. I think Carol would probably agree. They took us to Croatia's largest and oldest national park, the Plavica Lakes National Park. And let me tell you something, we walked eight miles that day and we never got away from water. And we did not even see the whole park. It is spectacular. And if you ever have a chance to visit that, you should take advantage of that. Just like I said, everywhere you went, there was water. Carol was also able to present at the Karlovac City Library Green Festival. Part of this green festival came about after their visit to us last year. And they were so impressed with the Mr. and Mrs. F. L. Schlegel Library and the work that they do at Wyandotte County Lake Park, that they created their own version of a green library outside of the city's Aquatique Fish Aquarium. And so Carol was presenting on all the activities that Schlegel participates in. And one of the other presenters was from Slovenia. And they also have a library that won a national award for doing things very similar to what the Schlegel Environmental Library does. This is the Karlovac City Library. And they have a mobile library just like we do. We couldn't wait to get on it. It is jam-packed with stuff. They also have a local history room, exactly like we do at the main library. And then Carol and I were able to meet with the Deputy Mayor of Karlovac. We brought with us a welcome letter from our mayor. And so that was a really interesting experience. We got to see actually the sister city emblem in their city hall, hallway right there. And then they took us on a day trip to Ljubljana, Slovenia. And I can't say enough about Slovenia. When we walked into the city library in Ljubljana, it was almost like I was walking into the downtown main library in KCK. It's a downtown urban library. They had, they have an aquarium just like we have. They have take-home crafts just like we have, self-check machines just like we have. And we had a good laugh, because if you took the signs down in their language and put them up in English, it could be any library in this country. We also visited the National and University Library in Ljubljana. And for those of you, Carol and I are book people, we thought we were at Hogwarts. That is, looks like the main reading room at Hogwarts there. And so that was a beautiful, they, over there, they do a lot of joining of national libraries and university libraries. And it was packed with people. I found those images online. They wouldn't let us take photos in there. But because we thought it was so much like Hogwarts, we had to include that. Another beautiful city library that we visited was Režika. This is a city on the coast of Croatia. If you have never been there, I highly recommend it. They are in the midst of, in the upper left, building a new library. The building in the lower left, that is the building in the upper left. They took an old tobacco facility. And when I say gutted it, they gutted it. The exterior walls are all that were left. And they are building this new library. Construction was due to be wrapped up just after we left with the new library opening in December. What's unique about this is that there are no children's services in this library. They have their own separate building called the Children's House. It is a concept library, sort of, that they are working on there. We include the picture at the bottom because Režika is where we lost Carol. And I wasn't terribly worried, because I know Carol and I knew that Carol knew she wasn't lost. But our Croatian hosts were full-on panicked that they lost the director of the Kansas City Kansas Public Library. And so after that, they did not let Carol within three feet of them. But this is the Children's House. That is an entire, more than 100,000 square feet building just to serve children. There is not a single children's book in that other library. So they have play space, they have a theater, they have, they do have a really lovely children's library in the attic. But they have all kinds of interesting, they have... But they have all kinds of interesting, they have their own theater. They put on productions. They were in the midst of practicing for a performance while we were there. And this is the Croatian Library Association in Zagreb, which is their version of the American Library Association. It was really quite interesting to talk with them. We, we talk about how so many languages are spoken in our district. And they live amongst people who are moving constantly. In fact, on one of our trips, there were so many of us traveling, it took two cars to get us everywhere. And Carol and I traveled in separate cars. Every day, my guide was, it was essentially a European history lesson, a history lesson on the breakup of Yugoslavia and that area. And we met a lady from Ukraine at the gas station on her way fleeing that country. And so, you know, it's a, it's a really interesting and different perspective than what we deal with, but similar in so many ways. And then in Zagreb, we also visited the Croatian National Library, which also serves as their university library. And it was jam-packed with people. And, and so it's nice, they, they took us to the rare books room. And for them, their rare books room is, you know, items that are 700 years old. And we got to look at some of them, but we did not get to touch them. And we asked to go into the vault, and they would not let us in the vault. But it was a fascinating experience. And so on the last day, our Croatian friends, that is Mirislav Katic on the left, Verdana Verana. And those were the two Croatian librarians that joined us last year. They were our hosts. And they brought all of their families out on the last night to meet with us. And, you know, I just, it's interesting. People who are committed to library service, no matter where you are in the world, we're all committed to the same thing, providing library service to the people where you live. And so that is refreshing to know that we deal with the same issues. We are committed to the same goal. And this trip could not have been made possible without the support of our library foundation, two of which of our members are sitting back there. For the part of the grant that was not covered on our trip, the foundation stepped up and helped Carol and me make this trip a success. And I thank you for letting us go and share this with you. We have probably 4,000 photos, if anybody is interested. Especially at the Plavica Lake regions, we could not stop taking photos. It was so lovely. But it was fantastic. And then finally, this Saturday is our annual Library in the Park. It's at the main library in the parking lot. And here on Park, in the back of the library, we welcomed you to come. We have a book sale. We have, again, the Go Chiefs Go author is giving away books. We have music, performances, lawn games, all kinds of fun activities. And we encourage you to join us.
Thank you so much, Carol and Laura. We definitely have a gem in our library system here in Wyandotte County and in Kansas City, Kansas. And we appreciate hearing. I know you said it was a little long, but we don't always get to hear from you and hear everything that you've been up to. So thank you for sharing tonight. That was really great. And thanks for sharing the pictures. I'm sure some of us will want to see some of those 4,000 pictures. Any questions for Ms. Levers or for Laura on their report tonight? Not when entertaining a motion to accept the library director's report?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, Board, it's, would ask for a motion to recess to executive session to discuss, for discussion of acquisition of real property under a coma for 15 minutes, going in at 6:55.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the staff that will be joining is Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, Ms. Devon, Doug Clemmons, Carol Levers, and Ms. Roslin Brown, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Stevie Reynolds as well.
And Ms. Stevie Reynolds, okay.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to return to open session, please?
Second.
Moved in second. Did questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. So next on our agenda, we'll continue on with Agenda Item Number Eight. Board, tonight, we will have an update on our KISA Year One and Accreditation Cycle. So, good afternoon, good evening, Ms. Walker. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Superintendent Dr. Sublefield, Board Members, and KCK Community Stakeholders. I am Lisa Walker, Executive Director of Federal Programs, and I'm here with members of our KISA District Leadership Team to provide updates regarding the district work that contributes to our accreditation. You did receive the expanded PowerPoint so that you could review more details about the full scope of work in each of the areas, because tonight, our presentation plan is to provide you with a high-level summary, so you can see how all of the work integrates. And then, we can field questions at the end about the accreditation process, or work occurring in departments, buildings, or any of the KISA outcome areas at the end of the overview. Tonight, we're going to highlight the work that sits in Themes One and Two of the District's Strategic Framework you see on the screen. This work is planned and facilitated by district departments and buildings. All of this work planned and implemented within these two themes aligns and contributes to the five outcome areas that you see in the KISA accreditation framework, as well as Board Goals One and Two. For the purpose of this presentation, this district and building work from Themes One and Two of the District's Strategic Plan will be shared explicitly tonight through the KISA lens. And the reason for sharing it explicitly through the KISA lens is to ensure we are addressing the specific work that's needed in order to hit those targeted recommendations by the Accreditation Review Council, and also to ensure that we achieve strong results across all five outcome areas. Of course, all of the work you'll hear about tonight supports the district's trajectory of reaching our 2031 North Star Goal. The work is aligned to the three district priorities, and the work supports the process and outcome goals that intersect across all of our district's continuous improvement frameworks, from the state, all the way down to the school improvement plan level. Kansas is changing the accreditation process and framework, and the 2324 school year will be a learning year as this transition occurs. Two of the more significant changes you see on the screen are moving away from one outside visitation team, visit, to more frequent check-ins with other districts who will be in our like-system peer review model. As well, we'll be moving away from a narrative report to showing conclusive evidence regarding fidelity of implementation of system-level work, as well as improved student outcomes. And on the screen, you see more details regarding the districts in our like-system peer review group, and the areas in which we'll be collecting all of that conclusive evidence. As you know, the district is currently conditionally accredited, and you can see in the highlighted portion of the state definition that we did show evidence of a quality growth process that was noted by our outside visitation team, as well as the ARC, the Accreditation Review Council. However, improvement in our student outcomes is lagging behind the progress we've made in that systems-level work over the past couple of years. So, listed here are the Accreditation Review Council's targeted recommendations. They believe these will assist us in improving our student outcomes, and they have been addressed by department and building-level work, and you'll hear more about that work as each outcome area comes forward tonight. And then, of course, here are two of the more significant student outcome areas that we will monitor to assess the impact of our systems-level work. So now, I'm going to move to turning it over to representatives from each of our outcome area. They'll come forward, and they'll share those highlights and summaries, and then, at the end, we'll have an opportunity for questions. So I'm going to start with our social-emotional learning outcome area, and I would invite Dr. Wilson and Ms. Tracy Chauvin to come forward to share their updates.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm Tracy Chauvin, the Director of Student Support Programs, and with me today is Dr. Jermaine Wilson, the Executive Director of Student Services and Family Support. Here, you'll see the members of our outcome team. We put together an interdisciplinary team that are leaders in that trauma-informed restorative social-emotional learning work happening across our district. And the data we re-reviewed for our needs assessment include a variety of data sources that really, really fuel and drive our work, specifically that work around that multi-tiered systems of support. So this is a continued goal that you should recognize from the past three years, that we've really focused on this KISA accreditation for that social-emotional growth. This is really just taking that next step into that work around social-emotional learning and that MTSS-tiered system of support. And so, underneath that goal, we have annual benchmarks. Again, these shouldn't be new. We're continuing to really eat that elephant one bite at a time, focusing on that average daily attendance and the overall attendance of our students, the chronic absenteeism, the discipline data specific around referrals and suspensions, as well as, next slide, sorry, as well as that culture and climate data, so the perception data. Are we really having an impact in how people are perceiving all of our stakeholders, all of our community members? What's new is some of the data, the measurements that we're taking. So you'll see baseline years on some of that. You're welcome to ask us any questions about that, or we can give you follow-up information about that as well. But we have goals that continue the work that we've been doing and laying that foundation for that Lisa, Ms. Walker spoke about. And so, lastly, we have a mental health intervention. So this goes back to that tiered systems of support. Do we have that continuum in place so that our students can access those quality, social-emotional, and mental health resources within our school? And do we have a really robust system to track and target those students? Dr. Wilson is going to give you more information about how we're going to be doing that, and those strategic, the strategy selection, and what this will look like.
All right. So our first strategy selection here, kudos to the team, is that we anchored all of the things that we did in the previous KISA cycle to make sure that we were able to have a coherent and
All right, can I have a motion to return to open session, please?
Second.
Moved in second. Did questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. So next on our agenda, we'll continue on with Agenda Item Number Eight. Board, tonight, we will have an update on our KISA Year One and Accreditation Cycle. So thank, good afternoon, good evening, Ms. Walker. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Superintendent Dr. Sublefield, Board Members, and KCK Community Stakeholders. I am Lisa Walker, Executive Director of Federal Programs, and I'm here with members of our KISA District Leadership Team to provide updates regarding the district work that contributes to our accreditation. You did receive the expanded PowerPoint so that you could review more details about the full scope of work in each of the areas, because tonight, our presentation plan is to provide you with a high-level summary so you can see how all of the work integrates. And then we can field questions at the end about the accreditation process or work occurring in departments, buildings, or any of the KISA outcome areas at the end of the overview. Tonight, we're going to highlight the work that sits in Themes One and Two of the district's strategic framework you see on the screen. This work is planned and facilitated by district departments and buildings. All of this work planned and implemented within these two themes aligns and contributes to the five outcome areas that you see in the KISA accreditation framework, as well as Board Goals One and Two. For the purpose of this presentation, this district and building work from Themes One and Two of the district's strategic plan will be shared explicitly tonight through the KISA lens. And the reason for sharing it explicitly through the KISA lens is to ensure we are addressing the specific work that's needed in order to hit those targeted recommendations by the Accreditation Review Council, and also to ensure that we achieve strong results across all five outcome areas. Of course, all of the work you'll hear about tonight supports the district's trajectory of reaching our 2031 North Star goal. The work is aligned to the three district priorities, and the work supports the process and outcome goals that intersect across all of our district's continuous improvement frameworks, from the state all the way down to the school improvement plan level. Kansas is changing the accreditation process and framework, and the 23-24 school year will be a learning year as this transition occurs. Two of the more significant changes you see on the screen are moving away from one outside visitation team, visit, to more frequent check-ins with other districts who will be in our like-system peer review model. As well, we'll be moving away from a narrative report to showing conclusive evidence regarding fidelity of implementation of system-level work, as well as improved student outcomes. And on the screen, you see more details regarding the districts in our like-system peer review group, and the areas in which we'll be collecting all of that conclusive evidence. As you know, the district is currently conditionally accredited, and you can see in the highlighted portion of the state definition that we did show evidence of a quality growth process that was noted by our outside visitation team, as well as the ARC, the Accreditation Review Council. However, improvement in our student outcomes is lagging behind the progress we've made in that systems-level work over the past couple of years. So listed here are the Accreditation Review Council's targeted recommendations. They believe these will assist us in improving our student outcomes. And they have been addressed by department and building-level work, and you'll hear more about that work as each outcome area comes forward tonight. And then, of course, here are two of the more significant student outcome areas that we will monitor to assess the impact of our systems-level work. So now, I'm going to move to turning it over to representatives from each of our outcome area. They'll come forward, and they'll share those highlights and summaries, and then, at the end, we'll have an opportunity for questions. So I'm going to start with our social-emotional learning outcome area, and I would invite Dr. Wilson and Ms. Tracy Chauvin to come forward to share their updates.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. I am Tracy Chauvin, the Director of Student Support Programs. And with me today is Dr. Jermaine Wilson, the Executive Director of Student Services and Family Support. Here, you'll see the members of our outcome team. We put together an interdisciplinary team that are leaders in that trauma-informed restorative social-emotional learning work happening across our district. And the data we have re-reviewed for our needs assessment include a variety of data sources that really, really fuel and drive our work, specifically that work around that multi-tiered systems of support. So this is a continued goal that you should recognize from the past three years, that we've really focused on this KISA accreditation for that social-emotional growth. This is really just taking that next step into that work around social-emotional learning and that MTSS tiered system of support. And so underneath that goal, we have annual benchmarks. Again, these shouldn't be new. We're continuing to really eat that elephant one bite at a time, focusing on that average daily attendance and the overall attendance of our students, the chronic absenteeism, the discipline data specific around referrals and suspensions, as well as, next slide, sorry, as well as that culture and climate data, so the perception data. Are we really having an impact in how people are perceiving all of our stakeholders, all of our community members? What's new is some of the data, the measurements that we're taking. So you'll see baseline years on some of that. You're welcome to ask us any questions about that, or we can give you follow-up information about that as well. But we have goals that continue the work that we've been doing and laying that foundation for that Lisa, Ms. Walker spoke about. And so, lastly, we have a mental health intervention. So this goes back to that tiered systems of support. Do we have that continuum in place so that our students can access those quality, social-emotional, and mental health resources within our school? And do we have a really robust system to track and target those students? Dr. Wilson is going to give you more information about how we're going to be doing that and those strategic, the strategy selection, and what this will look like.
All right. So our first strategy selection here, a kudos to the team is that we anchored all of the things that we did in the previous KISA cycle to make sure that we were able to have a coherent and focused direction in this next phase, but also that we were grounding it in evidence-based practices. So strategy selection for Area One is about improving school climate and behavior, because the evidence shows that this is crucial for creating a positive learning environment. The strategies that you see here are around building protective factors for our students, restorative practices, explicit SEL instruction, mental health and support, youth advocacy and development, and professional development support to our staff. The strategies that have been outlined or have been widely researched and have shown to have positive effects on school climate and increase student achievement. For our second overarching strategy, this is about providing various levels of support. Some of the evidence-based information that is anchored into is that MTSS process that was discussed by Ms. Chauvin, improved academic achievement, reduction in behavioral problems, early intervention for at-risk students, which also includes acceleration, increased spared referral accuracy, enhanced collaboration through PLCs, as well as data-driven decision-making. And in that data-driven decision-making component, it is helping our system to be able to adjust, pivot, and accelerate the needs of learners at an individual level so that they can be most successful. Here, you see some of the implementation data. Some of these components were reflected on the needs assessment, and then others will help us to reach and maybe outcome data that comes from some of the strategies that will be implemented. One of the things from the research that we did with the ARC recommendations from last year is we have a lot of good programs in place. How do we move those things together in a coherent fashion to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students? And then, when we think about student outcome data, things that you see based on the annual targets, here you see the outcome data that the team will use to make sure that we are able to track the trajectory of that. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Megan Cook, who is an outcome area leader for kindergarten readiness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to talk about kindergarten readiness, the outcome area, tonight. Here are a list of our outcome area team members for kindergarten readiness. We have included principals and others from outside of the district office to help us in our outcome area. We have also looked at nine data points when considering what our goal will be moving forward. Our five-year goal is going to be that 80% of our district preschool students will be ready for kindergarten. We are specifically talking about four-year-olds in this goal, four-year-olds that will move to kindergarten in the fall. Our annual benchmark goals are going to help us achieve that five-year goal. So we're looking at fast bridge data to see if 80% of our district preschool students are scoring in the low-risk category. We have targeted letter, sound ID, and one-to-one correspondence, because that would go along with one literacy and one math assessment. So you can see where we are starting with our benchmark. And then, our next goal is going to focus around retention of numeracy skills. So we are not just looking at how students are progressing during their four-year-old year and moving into kindergarten, but we also want to look at, once they are in kindergarten, are they retaining skills from preschool moving into kindergarten? So we are looking at some math assessments for our goal, and then, we are looking at some literacy assessments. And we chose these because they are looked at in the fast bridge in the spring and preschool, and then looked at in the fall in kindergarten. So we can track these in both places. Moving into our strategy selection, we wanted to focus on evidence-based strategies when looking towards how we are going to achieve our goals. We wanted it to be in line with something that's going to go all the way EC through 12th grade. And we wanted to make sure that we are exposing children to intentional instruction and learning around three areas: social-emotional, math, and knowledge of letters and sounds, vocabulary, and language. Specifically, focusing first on social-emotional, because we really want students to be ready for the higher expectations and more formal curriculum when they move into kindergarten. So we want them to have those executive functioning skills so that they're ready for that. Some implementation data that we are looking at is on the screen. We are specifically looking at data that we can look at throughout the year so that we can see where we're at, see what we need to do to make adjustments as we keep going. So things like surveys or formative assessments are things that we want to keep in mind so that we can make sure we're on track. And then, moving into student outcome data, we're going to look at some of the same data points, but we want to make sure that we focus on EDECA, because EDECA is going to be our social-emotional screener that's going to show us where students are at at the beginning of the year, and then mid-year, and then at the end of the year, moving into kindergarten. All right. Moving on to outcome area for individual plan of study.
Good evening. Dr. Kristin Scott, Executive Director of Middle Schools. Ms. Lisa Martinez, the Assistant Director of Diploma Plus, is the co-lead for the individual plan of study outcome area. Other members of our team are listed on this slide. Listed here, you will see the three main data points that we have reviewed with our team. Our five-year goal for this cycle is that 100% of middle and high school students will have an individual plan of study. Our benchmarks for this year are for 100% of our secondary students who have started their IPS, and at least 90% of secondary students will have completed all required grade-level tasks in the Zello platform. This is our first year implementing the Zello platform. We have used Naviance in the past. Our strategy is rooted in preventing dropout in secondary schools. The research-based practice is that a developed and aligned IPS can support students' engagement and persistence in school. Getting ahead of myself. We've selected two objectives to implement the strategy: implementation and completion of the IPS for all sixth through 12th grade students, and the creation of a scope and sequence aligned to the KSDE IPS rubric and Kansas CAN competencies. On this slide, you'll see that we're using the following implementation data to determine our progress: quarterly completion of reports from Zello, middle school experience data, high school web-based learning data, high school experience data, post-secondary navigation data. Alongside the following outcome data: FAFSA completion data analyzed in the spring, post-secondary advising and navigation data, building level analyzed monthly within teams, and the IPS tax completion, which is analyzed quarterly at the district level, building level, and by each family advocate. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Cole Amaya for the high school graduation outcome area.
Good evening, Board. Cole Amaya, I'm the Director of Secondary Diploma Plus Instructional Programs. You will see the outcome area team members for high school graduation. You will notice a group of counselors and principals and district-level personnel. The needs assessment, we had five data points to outline this outcome area. And out of that, we created a couple trajectories and benchmarks, which in the ARC report was something that they gave specific feedback to. So the first one we have for a five-year goal is a graduation benchmark. And so, we align this to the 2031 North Star, but then, we also have a five-year benchmark for a graduation as well. What you see on this slide is, in order to improve our overall graduation rates and/or cap assessment scores, we need a couple trajectories and benchmarks to track our movement of students out of Level One. So what you're looking at here are, in order for us to meet or exceed the state average of kids moving out of Level One, and then, how we're going to do that year to year. And so, essentially, it's us tracking a 3% to 4% drop every year in both math, ELA, and science. To get this work done, we have two overarching strategies. And the first one is similar to a strategy in the previous outcome area. We're going to focus on data-driven decision-making processes for monitoring the progress of all students and proactively intervene when students show early signs of attendance, behavior, and academic problems. So that's the academic side of our MTSS structure. And then, our other overarching strategy will be to engage students by offering curriculum programs that connect schoolwork with college and career success. And so, that's a lot of our work around AVID in our curriculum work. Here are a few implementation data points. And then, a lot of our student outcome data is lag data. So it's the traditional CAP data, it's the graduation rates, it's, we do have some fast bridge data, and then CAP summatives. And now, I will turn it over to Dr. Fernandez Flores.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Danita Fernandez Flores, Executive Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs. And this is the second year I'm leading our work in this outcome area for post-secondary. Joining our team is Dr. Angela Wright, as the new incoming Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Programs. She is the addition to our team. Part of our review of our assessment, including analyzing our Diploma Plus data, we have been able to capture information regarding our IRCs, industry-recognized credentials, college credits, the number of internships, and client-connected projects. So we've analyzed who, at what grade level, and in what courses these are attained, as well as reviewing the ARC feedback. As you're familiar, we've created a trajectory to 2031, as well as interim steps. You may know that we exceeded our trajectory this school year, and so, we had to re-tabulate, as well as taking into account a rising graduation rate. And so, what you see here is our projection for the next five years. We want to impact our students' EC12, and therefore, have added three strategy implementations in order for us to do that. With the first strategy implementation, we're talking about implementing a curriculum that prepares all students for college and includes opportunities for college-level work for advanced students. And so, when we're thinking of this, we're thinking about work-based learning, real-world learning opportunities, EC12. And in your expanded form, you'll see specific benchmarks we have in order to attain that. For the second strategy implementation, we're looking at a strategy of providing hands-on opportunities for students to explore different careers and assisting them in aligning post-secondary plans with their career aspirations. So this includes creating a robust experience in our career and technical education pathways and academies, as well as increasing our eighth-grader's ability to understand and explore the pathways that are into their high schools. For the next strategy, assisting students to complete college applications, financial aid applications to increase participation in post-secondary education. This is connected to the individual plan of study, and it's the work that we do in our success centers to ensure our students have touchpoints of advising about what their post-secondary plans are, as well as to assist them with the completion of things such as FAFSA. We track a lot of the work that our students are doing on a regular basis. We have monthly and quarterly check-ins into how our students are moving into the different components that make up Diploma Plus and the post-secondary for its success. And this lists a few of those. And our outcome data will be the graduation and the endorsements in Diploma Plus, as well as keeping track of the client-connected projects, how many projects we have at each building, how many students does it touch. And we're monitoring the students' individual plan of study, those that are set on a trajectory for associate's degrees, as well as monitoring our students' attainment of concentrator and completer status in our CTE. And of course, we want all of our students to graduate with that individual plan of study.
Thank you. Thank you. As we conclude tonight's update, you can see on the screen the next steps for departments, buildings, and our outcome area team members. We'll be collecting a repository of conclusive evidence through the implementation data that you heard highlighted from each area, as well as the student outcome data. And then, of course, next steps will include meeting more frequently, having check-ins with our like-system peer group, and receiving feedback on the reports that we give them regarding our progress for our fidelity of implementation, as well as what we're seeing in our student outcomes. And then, in June of 2024, we will be presenting all of the evidence throughout the school year for implementation data, as well as outcome data for another review for the Accreditation Review Council. And at that time, then, they'll determine next steps for our accreditation. So I want to thank all the individuals who represented a large number of stakeholders. You saw those outcome area team members. And those are just the members who are really meeting to plan and implement the work. Certainly, everybody in a department in this district, as well as at the building level, is a critical stakeholder in implementing work that's going to impact our student outcomes, which ultimately, then, contributes to our accreditation. So I will conclude the formal process and open it up for any questions or comments you might have regarding the accreditation process or any of the outcome areas or department or building-level work.
Thank you, Ms. Walker and team, for the information. I know there's a lot, Board, I know that there's a lot to unpack in there as well. Thank you for the information shared tonight. I would continue to encourage us to engage and dive into the information and data shared as questions arise. Tonight is not the only opportunity, but we will open for questions tonight. There's a lot to dig through and what this means for our district. But tonight, thank you for the team for presenting. But would open it up for any questions from the board members tonight.
I just wanted to say thank you. It's obvious that there is a change coming, and we're moving in the right direction. Everything that you all are doing, it's right there for us to see. Again, thank you all.
I have a comment and a question. Because based on what the KISA report gave back, we've been saying for a while, we need the data to support what we're doing. And we're really just beginning to do that. And in regard to students taking college courses, are we working really good hand-in-hand with the community college? We pay them a half a million dollars. And sometimes, they start their classes before school starts. So how do we work that out to make sure they're not dropping our kids and keeping them on the road and doing the necessary thing? Because that is a problem. We start school later, they start earlier. And we need to make sure that the kids are on roster. We're paying them a lot of money, we're not giving them $2.
Ms. Page, Dr. Moser and I are talking about that. For several years, they started a week after us, and recently, they moved their calendar up. But we are talking about that. They typically will make adjustments or exceptions for our students when our schedules don't align. It's just a matter of us communicating. But I don't, we can't control their calendar. We can just talk about the concessions that need to be put in place for our students. That's a recent change with them starting a week before us.
I respect that, but at the same time, they got to work with us. If we're giving them a half a million dollars, somebody there, we ought to be able to demand... them a half a million dollars, somebody there, we ought to be able to demand and say, hey, you got to work with our kids. You can start, but you got to work with us.
They are working with us. We're just trying to clean it up a little bit, so that there were a couple of hiccups this year. They have some new, they have a new dean in a couple of places and some new people on their staff. But Dr. Moser and I meet once a month, and that's one of the things that we are cleaning up. We're talking about now for next year.
Well, I hope we can do that, because that's been a problem for a while. And then, secondly, when it, in terms of pre-K, it's, there's, are we going to add any more pre-K classes in some of our elementary schools? Because that seems to be something that the kids need, and they're starting behind before they get started. So will we add more pre-K classes? I don't know. I'm just asking.
I would just also echo that, and I also brought this up in my one-on-one, not specifically what you're talking about, or in the direction of what you're talking about. But I was just going to kind of say, maybe you could talk to the innovation program that you're a part of, and your opportunity to explore and look at things as well.
Sure. So in order for us to open more classrooms, we need more funding. And the funding can come from different sources. But right now, when we look to expand, we can look to add students that would allow us to get more state funding, which would then bring in the funding that we need to support more classrooms. In order to generate more state funding, though, and have more students, we need space, and then we have to be able to ensure that we'll be able to get enough students to keep, to be able to sustain. So that's what we're
And staff.
Right, and staff. Because we're, we are having an issue with staffing right now, so it's hard to grow our program without the adequate staffing that we need. So that's one way. And then in our Head Start program, we can look at doing things a little bit differently if we want to as well. So right now, we serve 200 students in a full-day classroom setting, but we could look to expanding that to have more full-day options for students. There may not necessarily be more funding, but we might want to look at if we offer students a full day, will they be more prepared for kindergarten? And we always have a waitlist for our full-day classrooms. They get filled up first, because lots of our families need full days so that they can work. So that's something that we can consider as well.
And do we have the data that could show that these kids came early, and that they, once they made it to kindergarten, we do have information to show that it did help? I don't know if we do that. Just asking.
Yeah, that's what we're working on right now with Dr. Conrad, is to see where our students land when they get into kindergarten, and if they were in a full-day classroom, a part-day classroom, breaking that apart, so that we can have some better information moving forward.
But the national data and research shows that if they, the earlier you provide the education, they perform better. That's just national data and research, but we can look at the difference between our full-day and half-day programs internally.
Because it seems like that's what the KISA people want to see, some data to support what we're seeing, to help back it up. So that's the only reason I was asking that, so that we can keep working on that to improve.
Yeah. And I would just echo, going back to what I said, I brought this up, because I would encourage this board. I know we have lots of priorities. We have lots of things we're working on. However, the importance of our students starting early is how we stop some of this. And so as a parent who now has a preschooler in our preschool program, I can only imagine what it's like to have to figure out the other half of the day. So that's the person side of it. But the intentionality around my student having access to a full day versus a half-day, I think our data consistently tells us, if our kids continue to be behind, they're not going to be able to play catch-up. And so even if the state doesn't give us dollars, what are we willing to cut to stop the bleed? Because at some point, we have to get to that point to stop the bleed. Otherwise, the bleed continues for our disproportionate students who don't have that access. So maybe the parent that can't afford to figure out childcare or bus transportation because the neighborhood school doesn't offer it, then their kid is automatically out. But I'm sure there are parents in the half-day program that would love for their kid to be able to have access to that all day. But that means we have to make a commitment and find the money to make that happen, because we know that is, the data is clearly telling us. The other thing I was just going to mention is, I understand we were trying to take some of the pieces of the report and give it to us in this format. But what I also think we're missing is what does conditional accreditation mean for our district? I think lots of people have questions about what that means. But also, there was a part in there that talked about family and community engagement. However, I lack to see in some of the outcomes even how we involve our students. How do we have goals around 23, 24, around curriculum and class offerings? And we've already decided all of those things. And so I'm just trying to figure out how we engage our students and what our outcomes are, but also, how do we plan to track that community engagement piece from now to the end? And I know it was said there'll be multiple reports provided, but I just, on the record, just want that to show that there are pieces that are important that we're missing out of this presentation. So.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that this presentation represents where we are right now, which is in September of planning the work. And I think the team wants to be really intentional about making sure we're digging into evidence-based practices and grounding all of the things that we say are important to do in research-based strategies that we know work, right? Instead of working really hard on things that don't have a moderate or a high effect size. So I know that the student support programs is looking at that through the Welcome Center and the work that that department fields, as well as it will be embedded throughout the work we do with individual plan of study, college and career, and post-secondary, because with the Diploma Plus program, engaging parents around their students' academic and SEL progress is ultimately, you know, the end goal and a deeper level of engagement that we want to do. So we have not missed that on the radar screen. You're just hearing where the team is right now, based on, you know, what we've been able to put together. And of course, those plans are still ongoing, and we'll be developing those as we go through. But we know the target areas that we need to be addressing for our student outcomes, in addition to for what the ARC has recommended. Both are important.
Okay. And can you explain what, for the record, can you explain what conditional accreditation means? And if I understand, we also have to meet those ARC recommendations by the timeline that you just shared up there of June 2024.
Yes. Do you want to talk about?
So I was just going to read it. Conditionally accredited means that the system is in good standing, compliance with the state board, and either the system did not provide conclusive evidence of growth in student performance, or was not able to provide conclusive evidence of intentional quality growth process. So that's what it means. The recommendation that came from the ARC, which the team talked about, these are the things that we need to provide, that evidence, and that we're doing those things. And then in June, they'll review all the things that we put in place this year, and they met, I think we got the formal conditionally accredited from the state board in September. So either July or August, by next September, we will know if we are accredited, not conditionally accredited, based off of the things that we've put in place this year, or the evidence that we've provided.
And how are we getting this out, parents? I was told that the schools would do this, but how else are we getting this out to parents? What if I'm a parent, maybe I didn't go to the school the day they presented this? How will they know?
Are you, what, like, getting what out?
I mean, this whole report, how?
So all of this is public information. Our communication teams will put it in all of our communications, and we, just like how we advertise all of board meetings, those documents, they link, and people can see those. In the school newsletters, they talk specifically about the progress of their students and what their students are doing. And on FA days, in those times, they talk to parents face-to-face. But there's multiple layers of communication that happens. We know there are still gaps, so, but we do put all of the information out there publicly for parents and community members.
Are we checking to make sure it's going out in the newsletters?
It is. I mean, you get a copy of the Parents as Partners, the What's Happening in KC KPS, the other one, Ellen, I can't think of the name of it. Then quarterly, what's the Excellence at a Glance. And then quarterly, I will continue to do the recording. And so we highlight different components in different departments, and we bring them in. And one of the things that we always talk about is our academic progress, and we bring students in to hear their experience and their recommendations. So at the school level, and I know it's not across all schools, they also share that information out, however they're communicating with their stakeholders.
I think part of that, and maybe to part of your question, Ms. Page, is, you know, there's a lot of myths out there, or misinformation about what does this actually mean for the district, right? And so I think that may be some of the questions that come up is, oh, well, you're not fully accredited. Does my diploma actually mean anything? Or what does conditional accreditation actually mean? So while I know we have these different mediums that were sending this information, and our communications team may be mad at me if it's already out there and I haven't seen it yet. But just, again, maybe there's a fact sheet that we can have, that what does this mean, you know, one pager that has the information at a glance, conditionally accredited, good standing, we're in the right direction by June 2024, here are the goals, here's where we'll hit, you'll learn more here. And I think that may help dispel some of the myths.
Yeah, because that's what some people are saying. I didn't say what they say is true, but this is, they, in their mind, we didn't get accreditation.
Yeah.
And it needs to be clear. Again, that's what the word on the street is.
Yeah. And I think that is helpful information for us to hear, because I think what most people are thinking is what Kansas City, Missouri went through, and when they didn't have accreditation for several years. That is not where we are. We are conditionally accredited. It does, our students at the end of the year still will have an accredited diploma. And I think, to your point, we could pick together a fact sheet around what it means and what it doesn't mean for just our general community. So we will do that with the Communications Department.
Educating our staff, and, you know, I think to your student advisory board at the different high schools, that they understand what it means, and that they can also share information in their, you know, with folks that they may talk to as well. So I think there are different ways that we can get information out, Ms. Page, that help dispel some of the misconceptions, or, and make sure that we're sharing the facts. So that's great to hear that, hey, there may be some folks who just aren't hearing the message, and how do we do a better job of communicating in a way that will reach different audiences in different languages and in different ways that makes sense and make it simple, right? Because this, if you give my mom this packet, she's probably not going to read it, and she's not going to understand it, maybe. I'm sorry, Mom. But how do we simplify this in a way where you hand it to your everyday resident, and it's a simple, here's where we're at, here's where we're going, and here's what this means?
I think even for our staff, like, that's where my question came from, was the staff was like, what does this mean for us? Like, what does this mean? I can read the words on the paper any day, but what does that actually mean? Because we're all in good standing till we're not, so.
So we hear you, and we'll move forward with that. But I will highlight that, and I'm just being transparent, when I started, I was called and said we were on the road to not being accredited. And the things that we put in place the last two years is what got us to conditionally accredited. So that is no one, or no individual, or no collective. It was just a lot of transition, and that's where things got disconnected. But we are moving in the right direction. And so we hear you, and we'll get out a simple fact sheet around that. But that was one of my first comments.
Is our next progress report.
June 24 is when we will submit it. For you all, each time we do the end-of-the-quarter academic report, this information on what we're presenting, like the progress of our students, will be included in that. So the next one will be in November.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then one, in the college readiness, it said that they would pay for college applications. How many? If I apply, I thought that's what I saw when they were pulling it through. Or how many applications will they pay for, for a student?
I think that is something we could get back to you on. We could get that information. I know we do have a program where we do provide fees and help for students in credit also for a college application. So we could look through that and then send that information to you.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. I didn't know how many you pay for. Is there a limit? You just do it one time?
We will, we will send you all that information at the end of the week. Yes, thank you.
Additional questions? Discussion? Thank you again. Thank you to staff. And yeah, I think one area that you highlighted, Dr. Stubblefield, that I wanted to mention, I was trying to find in the letter. But I think it is important to note that, you know, they recognize that we, over the last two and a half, three years, we've implemented and put things in place that I think will help get us to where, to meet these goals that we're setting forward. I think the consistency that we've found over the last two and a half, three years in staffing, and just the direction that we as a board are also giving to staff has been helpful. So as we read that and see that, I think, you know, it's helpful to know that the consistency, the stability, and the things that we are implementing are the right things, based on their assessment and findings, to get us back to where we want to be and further. So I think that was helpful to read in the letter as well. So, and then the other piece that I would also just add is, as I look at a lot of these goals and data points that we're aiming for, or where we're at, they remind me of the board goals that the board has been working through so diligently over the last year and a half that we've set. And we look at our North Star, we look at our strategic framework, we look at our priorities, we look at these data points that were presented tonight, or that are on the PowerPoint. And I see where boards work on these goals, the work that we see in front of us are all very tied together and aligned. So that gives me a lot of hope as well, and knowing that we're moving in alignment. So thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, team, for that information. We'll move on with our agenda. Next on our agenda is item number nine, our board updates and approvals. Board, these items have come to us at least once, and are up for potential action if it is the will of the board. Item A, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the home field facility rental agreement as submitted by Mr. Wayne Correll, Mr. Steve Lilly, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions on this item or further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, it's recommended that Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the Solution Tree proposal in the amount of $1,461,112.30, paid by Title I Carryover for Elementary and Middle Schools, and Title II Carryover Funds for High Schools and Alternative Schools, submitted by Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved? Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, it is recommended that Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the bid of $1,247,590 from VASCA's commercial contracting approve the bid of $1,247,590 from VASCA's commercial contracting to replace four air handling units at Banneker Elementary in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED as submitted by Mr. Wayne Correll, Mr. Steve Lilly, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes, please, Mrs. Russell.
So this says, I'm just trying to get an understanding. So it says for Banneker, however, we postpone for ME Pearson and Banneker. So is it really supposed to be ME Pearson and Banneker? And then my, and I'm trying to go back in my memory at 8:05 at night. I see that it says we published these in 2022 with the expectation that we would do it last summer. But I think my clarity in my question is we're not doing this till next summer now?
As far as when, I have to. That is correct. It's going to, these have a very long lead time, which is why we want to get it to you now. We were originally planning, originally, we were looking at Quandero, ME Pearson, and Banneker. We were not able to get all three of those done. We got Quandero done this summer. We decided to break it up into pieces. So and and Banneker is now the worst remaining.
So ME Pearson is not on this.
ME Pearson, I'll look at doing, and we'll probably have to put that to bid. It's going to be too far away. But we'll put that back out in a future time. We can, we can make that unit work. Banneker, we have serious concerns over keeping it working next summer. So in order to get the units in time, we needed to get this awarded so we can get that in time to put it in next summer. So you're correct on that.
Okay, and so bids don't typically expire or you rebid this process after?
Didn't technically rebid, and Wayne may step in here. But what I did was I contacted independently separately the two, the bidders, and asked them to give us an update on the pricing. And so we got updated pricing and this bidder honored the bid that they gave us previously.
From before? Okay, that's where my question. Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. For the next agenda item is a new business item. Nothing is being asked of the board tonight. It is just for informational purposes. If you have any questions on this item, please reach out to Dr. Stubblefield and make sure that you submit any questions to her. Otherwise, this is here for your informational purposes tonight. Anything else to add there? Yes, Ms. Humphries.
Have we asked our facilities maintenance people about whether affixing those to the outside of the bricks is going to affect the watertightness of the building?
Doug is coming forward. They've been in, they've been in the loop on the conversation. Yes.
Hello again. The question is the the process of affixing those to the bricks. I think what they're planning on using is something, and I would encourage and wanted to use an adhesive so we're not penetrating the bricks. And frankly, that's something that I would want our staff to do, so we control and maintain that process.
Okay, so do we know what the cost to our, to have our employees do that is?
Oh, the actual, like, the labor time?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And and the cost of the adhesive. I would just like to make sure that we know upfront what everything entails.
You know, that'd be something, I don't know, we got, and that's a very good question. We got into the details we about how that's going to be affixed. So we could ask the Alumni Association if that would be something included in their cost of that. But I I can't say that I can answer that right now. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's, I didn't think you could, but that's just something that popped into my head because we've had moisture problems at building and our building envelopes and affixing something to the outside.
Right.
That was it.
We love our alumni associations, and I guess I don't expect an answer either. But I think just being clear on what the expectation is. Because we can say, yeah, let's do it. But then when they're like, well, when is it going to be done? How, like, when they continually have people buying them, what is the expectation that they have of us? Just being clear on what those are. And I'm not saying you asking them, but you saying, this is what I can do. So then no one's like, well, you guys said we could do this and your team hasn't done it. So just making sure of that.
I appreciate those thoughts. Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Make sure they just include that in their cost. It will cost you this and the labor will cost on our part this, and there's no misunderstanding.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item, we are under item number 11A. Board, back before you, is for a second read, the acceptable usage policy. We had really good discussion at the last board meeting regarding this agenda item. So I will hand this off to Mr. Goheen to walk us through this.
Can I take a moment, please? I apologize. When I looked at the 8/11 copy, that is the redline version that you saw at the last board meeting, the second copy, 9/21, which is tonight, the the redlines have disappeared. I don't know why. But if you, the only change from last board meeting to tonight's board meeting is there was some discussion among board members last time about Bullet Three, Interaction with Students. That was the only bullet that was talked about. And so that is redlined, that bullet. So that's the only language change. I have copies of that red, if you want that here as a paper copy. But the only redline change is that third bullet with interactions with students.
We have red.
Is yours red?
Yeah.
Mine is not red.
Well, not on the 9/11 or?
9/21.
9/21, I'm sorry, copy. The eight, August copy is redlined.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Timber copy.
So I I can look at, I mean, everything else is read from the first board meeting except for that third bullet where the board had discussion around photo photos of students.
But on the 8/11, it doesn't have the new wording. It's redlined, but it doesn't have the language.
And and to be clear, come back, I don't know if we've got copies of the modified language. The board wants to look at it that way. But we brought it back two ways because I didn't think we had clear direction from the board on what the board wanted to do. So there was proposed modified language from the original one submitted as well as the original one submitted to the board so that the board could tonight give direction on which one you want to move forward for a third read or if you didn't like either of the two and wanted us to make additional modifications. So if you got it.
I do have it. Do you want me to give that to you?
Yeah, let's let's distribute that to the board and then we'll we'll figure out electronic copies. Everyone's got one, but let's get the the paper ones.
So the the red line, it's the only thing different than the last time is this one, so.
So while she's passing those out, what we would like to have from the board tonight is either a approval for a third read of the original version that was provided at the last board meeting or of the modified language that's on the the paper copy that is getting passed out. Or is still making approval for this for the second, approval of the second read with direction to come back with additional language for the third read. So I think those are the three options we're kind of looking for. The changed language, dealing with the student part that's in the written copy, was just a modification of the gist of the language dealing with the student.
Mr. Goheen, just sorry to interrupt. And board, I'm just putting this on the table. If you'd like, our next regular board meeting in October is policy heavy, where we'll be taking up different policies. If you would like, we could table this. That way you have time to review this and take this back up on the October 10 meeting. So you're not trying to review this right now and and have a conversation.
That's fine.
If, but I'll leave that to the board if that is what you would like to do.
I move that we table this to the October 10 meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Greg, can you send us out a?
Clean copy.
Clean copy of this in a separate mail from anything else?
Yeah, I I could send it to everybody as an email and I'll attach both copies. And and the first one has the red line that you looked at, the approved for second read. And then the extra version is one where we tried to make modifications. I think it was primarily Ms. Russell that had made those requests. I wanted to leave both in front of the board because I I did not have clarity as to whether the board was all in agreement on that or not. Makes sense?
Thank you.
I'll send both copies out to the entire board.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Russ, or Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, the next agenda item is our board discussion. You have received a couple of emails from Ms. Smith and then one this past week from me kind of lumping these two items together per policy. And I believe it's policy FC. Greg will correct me if I am wrong. Anytime there is a request for any type of name, naming of any facilities that the district owns or renaming of any any facilities, that must be taken up by the board first and then handed off to a committee if the board deems it is appropriate for the naming committee to take this on. In the email that I sent this week, you'll note first, there is a request regarding Schlegel's Gym to be named after an individual. And you should have received the letter that accompanied that as long, as well as the email. The second is a request from staff at Eisenhower to rename a private street in front of Eisenhower and a parking spot as well on behalf of an individual. Again, per policy, the board must make a decision whether we would like to take up these requests. And if so, then we pass them along to the naming committee. If so happens, there is a naming committee meeting this week, I believe. So they are timely if the board decided to do that. So it would open up for any questions, discussion. And if there is the will of the board to pass these to the naming committee, we can do that tonight as well.
Have we in the past, Greg, named a street or a exterior access in honor of someone?
I don't know if we've named it. I don't think we have very many non-dedicated streets that attach or affixed to our schools. I think that the oddity here is Eisenhower does have that street that sort of navigates between the school building and the park. So I'm not aware of one that we've got named after an individual. But I'm also not aware of very many streets that we have as a school district that are not dedicated to as public right of ways to the city.
But we have several gyms that are named after people, correct?
We do.
So I will just make a correction. If you go to Frank Rushton, the back drive is dedicated that street, which I think is very similar to here, to the street they're talking about, is named after Ms. Welsh, the last principal. So I don't know what that process was, but there is there, and it has a fixture and everything. So there are a couple in the district. And I want to say JFK, but I'm not sure that that's the school I'm thinking of. But I think JFK is also another one right across the street from Eisenhower.
What I will add to that, because today you're just deciding if the naming committee will explore it, is I don't know if all of those came to the board.
I don't think so.
So that's just one thing to know.
Yeah, I mean, a new building, it's right there. So I mean, somebody new, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I don't think it formally came to the board, so.
I make a motion that we forward this to the naming committee.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion?
And that they look into, maybe some stuff didn't come by the board to see what do we need, do we have a policy on it?
So we do.
But you got, you got a policy on the naming committee.
Okay.
But ultimately, whatever the naming naming committee recommends comes back to this board for a decision. They could decide to recommend that you do it. They could decide to recommend that you don't do it. And ultimately, it comes back to this board. But the way your policy is set up is if you have a request and the board wants to explore it, that's the process for doing it. And you don't have any other real criteria beyond what's in that policy for that. Some districts have different criteria set up and say, you know, we do or don't name certain things at all, but you guys don't have a limitation here.
So I'm just going to follow behind him and say that it is, I hope that at the October 10 meeting, we can also look at the naming policy. I think it needs some clarity. I think both with what the process is, but also how we, what it is we are willing, are we doing? And then like, how do you truly, so the three of us are going to sit in a meeting and say, how do we narrow this down and say, yes, you're deserving of something, but you're not? So I think there's just some clarity in even that, that needs to happen in the policy work. So then it is when we're passing the baton, it's not like, what do we do? So because then it's based on my knowledge or my not knowledge of what something is or isn't. So just a formal process and then us as a district having a document that says, this is named after blah, 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 blah. Because it's, to me, there's been no clarity on that as well, so.
Additional questions, comments? There's a motion and a second. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is, and I'm looking to see if Ms. Tiffany Lewis is with us.
She is.
There she is, to have a brief update on COVID. Good evening, Ms. Lewis. Thank you for joining us.
So as Ms. Lewis is coming forward, I do just want to, I mean, she has information, but I do want to remind the board that we do not contact trace anymore. We would not know specific case numbers at schools, but she can give a general update based off of what her staff is aware of.
So I guess with that notion, do we have an idea of schools with high attend, absences due to sickness, self-reporting? Because that is something that we're tracking in our systems, correct?
We do track attendance. And if a parent tells us students are sick, we would know that. But we wouldn't have that solid data or Ms. Lewis wouldn't, may not have it in front of her today unless it was a something that was really out of the ordinary.
So I would just ask, since we're saying we can't get that data today, that we do have, or if the board is okay, I would like to have that data provided in the end of the week so we can get a better picture of what health and wellness looks like in our buildings. Because I think we can generalize with the rising spike of COVID. If there is a high number of staff or student absences, that there is something going on, even if it's not contract tracing. So I will, if it is the will of the board to get that information, I would strongly suggest that we have that.
I second that. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Good afternoon, President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Dr. Stubblefield, and board members. So I will start by saying, yes, there is an increase in absences. The difficult situation is we are not tracking COVID and absence related. We are using the HS code for those that we know about, so that's the COVID code. But folks aren't self-reporting. How we're finding out is on from those individuals that do self-report, staff and students. We're seeing an uptick across the board, not just in elementary, not just in middle, but across the board. Exact numbers, I don't have them. And even if I was to give you the data, I'm not sure that it will be 100% accurate because some folks just don't report it, right? So we are in a situation where So we are in a situation where as when they do report it, I'm mandated by the state to let the buildings know, hey, this is the numbers. If it's one isolated incident, we won't let the building know. If it's more than one, more than one, like five or more, we will let the building know. Because like with any other communicable disease, we have a Kansas law that states we have to notify families that we've excluded students because of it, whether it's flu, syphilis, TB, COVID. We're grouping all the communicable diseases together. Does that answer questions?
Yeah, so there is a Kansas law in terms of our health department that you do have to let the parents know.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask Greg to look up our policy? Because our policy says something about 10% and I had a question around how can we track 10% to then follow KDHE guidance if we're not even tracking those instances? And so then our policy doesn't.
That, that policy expired June 30th.
Remember we.
And then the board implemented under the communicable disease policy that you have the right to put the, say that we're a mask. But those, that, that meeting here, that policy expired and Greg recommended that the masking component go into the general policy.
Yeah, so the two board policies right now that are in effect are just JGCC, which is, I believe, the Student Communicable Disease Policy, and GAR, which is the Staff Communicable Disease Policy. COVID, I think is, she just indicated, is treated as a communicable disease, just like any other disease that would fall in that category, which could include the flu. We don't have the 10% metrics anymore because unlike during the pandemic where we had some additional authority to make inquiry into medical information or records to address the pandemic, we don't have that authority anymore. So we don't have the ability, I don't have the ability to question you as a staff member about what your specific illness is. I can only.
But I do have the authority to require people to wear masks.
You do, and she does.
She does or we do?
I think it's part of your policy. Well, the board does, but, but you.
The health department.
The health department, obviously.
Yeah.
But you've got some ability to take some intermediate steps. But those would all be based upon input from the Public Health Department and other things that are reflected in the policy. It'd include release of some information.
I do have.
Yeah, it's JGCC and GAR are the two policies.
Ms. Clark, go ahead.
I have a question. And Ms. Page, I want, I'm asking out of curiosity, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. When you asked for this update today, I understand the update is very important. I'm just thinking about future, like what, what are we trying to make sure that we're attempt checking and I want to make sure we're aligned?
Okay. I asked because I had heard that one of our middle schools had had an outbreak. Again, I said, I heard, because I don't know.
I just want to be on the same page with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to know. And if there's a problem, then we may have to say this class or this room or something. But we do want to protect everybody.
Agreed, agreed. I align.
That's all I was asking, because we're not tracking. But how are we doing? We're hearing the hospitals are having problems. We're hearing it other places. So how are we doing as a district? So it'd be naive.
One of the things that will help us to have the right information, if we know that we can either, like in the end of the week, we can just give, like we'll provide the data around absences. But you do need like a comparable point, like what was it compared to like last year this time or a week ago or something? So we can work with Deera and them so that, because the data, like your absences are this this week. If you don't have anything to compare it to, it really doesn't mean anything. And just moving forward, if we know in advance, that way Ms. Lewis can have that particular information. When there have been situations where we either had a whole class or those kind of things, we do share that information with the board. And then sometimes stuff has happened in real time, like you're coming to a meeting, they're sorting through some stuff. So I'm not saying that they're, I'm not aware, but there may be an update tomorrow or something about a particular location. Because they're working in real time.
I don't believe that I've seen anything about a whole class. And I think this is a longer, bigger conversation around health, health and wellbeing. Because I feel like we get conflicting information. So there are individuals who are saying, we're not taking it serious. But there will also be individuals who believe it's my own right to be able to do, wear a mask, not wear a mask. But I also think the health and wellbeing of our students and our staff is more important than us not sharing information. And I feel like some people feel like we're not sharing information. And I have never seen a report of classrooms being closed.
We sent one earlier this year, it was one particular elementary.
But it also goes into the Narcan conversation of there has not been clear, from a board perspective, of what that even looks like in our buildings. But then we hear horror stories out in the streets about this happened at this building, but we are not. So I think it's a bigger communication conversation. But I think on, in this respect, I am with her, is that I've heard concerns that we're not taking it serious. So, and I don't know how to frame that. And I don't know that I can compare it to last time to this time because the data at the hospitals is different from now to last year too. So I don't know if that's even a clear.
I was just saying, having a reference point. So last year, we know there were higher rates, like they said that. Like when they talk about COVID in general in the public, they're like, there is a rise, but it's lower than it was to whatever X point. So that's only my reference point, because if you have it and you don't have anything to compare it to, it can be interpreted however, whatever your bias is. So we'll get the information and we, regarding those things.
Two weeks ago, to, that would be the most.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was just saying, I was saying in general, you need a comparison point, just not this week. You need a comparison point to something.
If attendance is something the kids are reported on, that we need to get attendance up and they're not coming to school because they're sick. Come on now, we gotta do something or at least find out or what's going on or how can we help?
No, and I think that's what we're saying. We'll get you the information, but you do need something to compare it to. And then I will also share that while things do happen, everything that is shared is not necessarily factual or the complete information. So we'll make sure we share the information so that you will have it building by building. And then if you're hearing things, if you share with us, we can tell you what we know, are aware of.
Right. Additional questions, other discussion?
So do we have to vote on that or we?
No, we'll put it in the end of the week. We can share the data in the end of the week, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next agenda item, or we will recess to executive session, entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of safety and security going in at 8:35 for 10 minutes. Lou Chief Nicholson, Mr. Steve Lilly, Dr. Judith Campbell, Ms. Samree Devon, and Mr. Greg Gohean. Their motion to do so.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, with the exception of those called, you're free to go. Staff, with the exception of those called, you're free to go.
Ms. Russell, seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Would now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of parties involved under coma with potential action to follow for five minutes, going in at 8:50.
Janie moves.
Rachel, second.
Seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
She stepped out.
Okay, Maxine Drew. Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. It's Ms., I didn't.
She said, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.